Is this supposed to start at six thirty?
No, it's a typo. It starts at seven o'clock. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not sure. Hello, Vicky.
Volume, yeah. And maybe that's because they haven't started the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Just a reminder, if you're not muted, please mute yourself before our meeting starts. We'll be starting in just a couple of minutes. All right, everybody, it's seven o'clock. Straight up. So we will get started. They call this. The City Council meeting, the Oak Ridge City Council to order on July 1st at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming. Brian, are you there? I'm not.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. If everyone would mute themselves, Brian, will you lead us?
Yes, ma'am. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Jackie, will you do a roll call for us, please?
Mayor Holston.
Here.
Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Thank you, counsel. Let's get started then. Looking at additions, corrections, and adjustments to the agenda. We do have some additions. To the agenda that were sent out. We have a review of an emergency ordinance as it relates to fire and fireworks. I'm going to put that and combine that with, not combine it, but put it right in front of the Fourth of July celebration, 10.4. So that we can look at those together, which makes total sense. Are there any other additions and corrections from the CA?
Nothing here, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any other additions or corrections or business that you would like to add to the agenda from the council? All right, hearing none, we will move into public comment. This is public comment. We will allot 30 minutes in its entirety. Each individual has three minutes. Please clearly state your name and your address before you begin. We'll start with those individuals who are at the WAC. Brian, do we have anybody at the WAC who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, we have one coming.
All right, please have them move forward.
Okay, I am Vincent Marish, I live at 76563 Walker Street. Okay. On June 22nd, Lake County declared an extreme traffic emergency. On June 30th, Governor Brown declared a state of emergency because of what she called the imminent threat of wildfire across Oregon. She said Oregon is still recovering from last year's wildfires, which resulted in nine Oregonians losing their lives. And thousands more losing their homes. With wildfires already sparking this year, it is imperative we act now to prevent further loss of life, property, business, and our natural resources. Oak Ridge was lucky last year, we are experiencing unprecedented heat and dryness. Fire six years ago on the Fourth of July, a rocket landed on the roof of the house next to mine. If a neighbor had not seen it, it is likely it could have taken out much of the neighborhood, including my house. Please restrict all fireworks to green water parks. We cannot risk the chance of a fire happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent.
Mayor, I have one. That was emailed to me. If I could read that for the record.
Please go ahead.
Oak Ridge City Council Mayor and City Administrator, my name is David Gordon. I live at 47755 West First Street. I've been a school teacher here since 1992, a volunteer with the Oak Ridge Fire and EMS since 1993. Over the years, there have been many challenges and things that have come up. We had to find solutions. I can remember a big discussion about where to put the new fire safety. Some wanted it to be in the vacant lot across from First Tech Federal Credit Union. Several others and I suggested putting down the Highway 58. A better access to the highway. We felt it would be a nice new building to show travelers that our town was making improvements even after the mills closed. The fire chiefs we had had have had over the years have always supported paying volunteers for the time they make to train and for leaving their families to respond to calls. As far as I know, there's never been a proposal to not support the volunteers with pay for their time, training, and responding to calls. I have seen the results of mismanagement of city funds before any of you are in your current positions. The struggles the city has right now with budgeting started before this year. Unfortunately, we need to move forward with honest efforts to fund the city, including fire and EMS volunteers. You may think that they are called volunteers, why can't they just do it for free? It would be in dire straits if you made that choice. We have multiple people who help volunteer up here from the valley. They come because there is financial support to make the trip up here. The pay is about $4.16 an hour for a 24-hour shift. Also, we have to maintain a certain level of proficiency that can be literally be life or death, unlike the library and most other volunteers around the city. Our training and maintenance of our skills is critical. Without the payments, which by the way are also under minimum wage, we would find it harder, and it is already, to find a field, a trained and ready crew each and every day. Medical calls just don't happen at convenient times. If you want people to be willing to give up their Christmas mornings or their daughter's birthday parties, you need to show some respect and continue providing support. Just yesterday, I was not on duty but ended up relieving a volunteer who became ill. Nine calls, bits of which were second outs and one third out. Second out means while one call is happening, another call comes through dispatch. Third out means that while the second call is out happening, another call comes for help. I even had to stop working on this letter to go on a call in which four other calls happened while I was out on the first call. Springfield had to come up twice for non-transport calls. If we have more volunteers, we could have saved them the trip. I was just elected to be the president of the Volunteer Fire Association this past week. I've avoided that commitment for many years because of my commitment to my fifth grade students and the time it takes to be a good teacher. I'm close to retiring and was hoping to volunteer more, much more, once I retire. My goal was to make my health insurance payments through volunteering. And that would allow me to volunteer even more. Without the financial commitment from the city for volunteers, I don't see how some of us could volunteer as much. As for solving the budget issues, I know people feel a $31 a month increase is way too much for a fixed income. If we had, if we, what if we implement a 10-cent gas tax, which would only, which would get money not only for non-property owners, but bringing money from out-of-towners? I know the gas stations would be concerned with staying competitive to draw customers, who could choose to drive to a cheaper place, so the amount may have to be five cents. It is something to consider. The gas tax must be used for city streets, sidewalks, etc., so the money saved from that area in the general budget can be applied to supporting the volunteers. Also instead, what if instead of a $31 a month, it's $15? I think many people would be more open to an amount like that. I know I would be, and I plan on being on a fixed income soon. Unfortunately, I'm unable to be at the City Council meeting, but I needed you to know how I felt about our budget. And how possibly find a solution that continues to provide medical services to our city. Please, 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 don't kill our ambulance service by approving the proposal to not fund any of the volunteers in the adjusted budget. Respectfully, David Gordon, advanced EMT, OHS softball coach, and local fifth grade teacher.
Thank you, Brian. Were there any other written statements or any at the WAC?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, so public, those of you who would like to speak. I would just encourage you to unmute yourself, identify yourself as wanting to speak. And then state your name and your address when I call on you. So currently, I'm going to run through the list. Currently, I see Eugene Kathcart, who's unmuted himself. Vicky Lindsay, you've unmuted yourself. And let's see. Going through, I don't see any other folks, but I will make sure, oh, and Dan Barkley, I see your hand up. Excellent. And Eric Higdon, I see your hand up. Wonderful. Okay, and, and don't worry, if I don't see you, there, there would be more opportunity because I will be looking and, and calling out folks. Um, okay, so Eugene Kathcart, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Eugene Kathcart, and I work and live here in Oak Ridge. My home address is 76589 View Court. I'm here tonight to speak to you all. About the proposed sale of the large yellow building up on the industrial site. It just recently came to my attention that Matt Bernie, I believe his company is called Middle Fork. Property management is interested in obtaining and or acquiring this building. And I just couldn't believe what good news that would be when I heard it. Matt is a respected metal sculptor and fabricator. And he's respected in the community. He currently, I believe, lives in Springfield. I know him as an acquaintance and through just knowing a bit about his artwork and fabrication. He's a person that could really take the bull by the horns and do something great with that building, which I've been just looking at ever since I moved here. And hoping something awesome could happen in. So I'd just like to give you my support for moving forward with the sale of the large yellow building on the industrial site to Matt. And tell you that, you know, I think he'd be a great addition to our community. And I think he'd probably end up providing some employment for people here. And would do something really positive, both with the space and in the community. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
So Vicky Lindsay. Will you go ahead, please, if you're ready? Vicky, you're unmuted, but I don't hear you. Are you trying to say something? Okay, I will, I will go back to you. And I'm just going to go by how I see people on the screen here. So Dan Barkley, I see your hand up. Please go ahead.
Dan Barkley, 47501 Highway 58. Okay, the shortest tonight's council packet is a mere 58 pages less than my copy of Robert's Rules and more pages than Herman Melville's Moby Dick. First of all, with the singular exception, I want to commend the council for showing the courage and daring to suggest, let alone approve, a budget that actually reduces expenditure. That's real leadership. While insufficient to resolve our current fiscal crisis, it seems a good faith gesture on council's behalf, and I hope the first of many sensible reductions. In the absence of a polite term of describing the last council meeting, I'd like to reflect on actual events from the special session. A motion to accept state revenue sharing and impose ad valorem taxes was approved. That should be the case. An initial motion to adopt a proposed budget, which included a horribly constructed ordinance, was rejected. A follow-up, an incorrectly restated motion to approve a budget of roughly $900,000 more than what, than that proposed by the budget officer actually never received. Actually received a vote in favor of the aforementioned $900,000 increase. Singular exception. Not the attention to detail I'd expect from any elected official. Ordinance 937 apparently doesn't say what it actually does say, which is now moot as a resolution has not been read, heard, given a voice. It never matters how often misrepresentations are made or by whom. The only thing that matters is the language used to impose a rural policy ordinance or any other source of authority. Given the majority reluctance of council to approve the original proposed budget with ordinance 937 attached at both the 617 and 621 meetings. Predictable seems a much more appropriate response than unbelievable regarding the outcome. This crisis was never chosen by the citizens, but inflicted upon them by decision makers. And no one wants a reduction in services, but moving forward, the solution would seem neither increased revenue through collection nor something achieved exclusively. By decreasing expenditure alone, but a combination of both. Citizens may require to write bigger checks to generate revenue, but it's also incumbent on council to reduce expenditure and start writing smaller checks. Thank you.
Eric Higdon, go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Eric Higdon, 48401 Sunny Nook, and I address you tonight regarding the fire department funding. Specifically, part-time and volunteer stipend. I want to remind council that the fire department has been attempting to staff with four people per day. One career, one contract employee through PeopleReady, and two stipend volunteers. With the proposed supplemental budget, this staffing level will have to be reduced at some point in the future to drastically low levels. As an example, in the last seven days, the fire department has responded to 30 incidences, including a house fire where a resident was still inside the residence. Of the 30 instances we responded to in the last seven days, 12 were second out, two were third out incidences. With the current level of staffing, Eugene Springfield were called up twice in response to medical calls because we were simply out of staff. This has the potential of only getting worse. Citizens will have to wait for an ambulance from Eugene or Springfield for up to, and if not longer than an hour. This will put people in jeopardy. I am concerned for the citizens, and I'm here to work with the council. And city administrator and mayor to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And I am looking down the screen. I'm going to go back to Vicky Lindsay, who had unmuted herself. Vicky, are you there? Okay. If you're there and trying to speak, we don't hear you. Unfortunately. So I'm going to move on. I see also an individual whose screen is identified as iPhone 2 that is unmuted. Is that an individual who wishes to speak? If it isn't, please mute. There, there you go. Read my mind. Please mute yourself. Okay, and I haven't seen anything. Anything further. If there is anyone that I'm missing in what I'm looking at, please just speak out so that I can. I can acknowledge you. And I see someone who is connecting in, but I don't know. I'll give it a minute to see if that actually connects in before we move away from public comment, and that closes it. Okay. It's still trying to connect. All right, let's move on then. We're going to move into mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations. I just have a couple of things. To share with you. The first is a letter that I received from the Red Cross. Asking for, for the state of, state of Oak Ridge, do I wish, Oak Ridge's participation. I'm about to start. So Kristin Dodge, I see a hand up now. I am willing to go back if you have public comment, because I don't, I know this is a difficult process. Kristin, your hand is up.
Okay. Okay. Sorry for the late hand raising. I had unmuted myself and was unobserved, so I thought I'd flag instead. So I wanted to let you know that, like many other members of this community. I read your letter that was posted today very carefully, and there's a couple of things I would like to address. I want to make it clear that as a taxpayer and as a member of the Oak Ridge community. I am not looking to cast blame. I am not looking to. To assist in the division that is already part of our community. What I am looking for is, I'm looking for clarity. I am looking for plain speech because. I am looking for plain speech because I've watched the last few council meetings, and I have not seen a lot of what I would consider clarity, especially around the budget. I've done quite a bit of research on things like the payroll of the city, which is a matter of public record. And what my partner and I realize is that a lot of the upper administrators of this town are making quite a bit more than administrators of towns like Brandon by the Sea, who are similar to us in population, that have a far more rigorous tourist season. I know it's a bitter medicine, but in light of the fact that we are, I'm trying to remember, over $500,000 in the red. Wouldn't it be prudent to consider for the time being a wage freeze? If not, some sort of reduction in salary for administrators that are leading a city that simply does not fit the tax bracket required for such wages? Again, I know that's a bitter medicine, but the numbers don't lie. And my partner sat down with council member Hollis and then over those numbers with her, and she was very helpful in providing answers to questions. This is something I'm submitting respectfully. But if we're in such dire straits, then sometimes these kind of measures seems inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Would you also take their hand down? Thank you. All right. We're popped back up again. Kristin, there you go. You got it. Okay, let's move on. I do want to say, Kristin, in response to what you just said, is that our city administrator actually did not take a pay increase. Instead, took a increase in numbers of vacation days this year, which did not impact whatsoever the, the numbers. So that's peace that I'll, I'll respond to. Okay, what I want to just alert you to is the Red Cross sent out a readiness and had some requests of, of Oak Ridge itself to assist. What they said was that in the last few days, we've experienced record-breaking temps, elevated wildfire risk. Unfortunately, early information indicates that at this time of this letter, twelve hours ago, with sixty-three potential deaths from the heat wave. They assured us that they're working together with emergency managers across the region. They want to continue to support communities in their region. As they head into the Fourth of July holiday weekend and in coordination with the, with the governor's recent state of emergency declaration, they wanted to know what they have in place. A disaster response operation was stood up last week and remains in place currently for the extreme heat event and red flag warnings. Several dedicated shelter strike teams will be available to stand ready where necessary. There is regular communication with the emergency management partners across the region to work through local needs. And they have, and this is the part they're asking for help with, a critical nationwide shortage of blood due to this past weekend's severe heat, twenty percent of the scheduled blood donors canceled. So they're asking for this, to please follow them on Facebook, on Twitter for information, to recruit volunteers in your community. And I have the contact information if you're interested in, in volunteering, but also to promote the need for blood and make your way in to make blood donations as, as you can. So I told them that I would share that with my community and encourage you to do what you can to assist. I also wanted to share with you a request that we received. And hold on, forgive me. I, I don't think I can do two things at one time. Scroll through my email as well. A request that we, we received from the Regional Solutions Office of the State of Governor Brown's office. Regional Solutions is a group that gathers to help communities solve issues when it crosses many agencies, and they can help cut through red tape. We received a request from them, and I just wanted to read it out to you because while in the midst of, of our budget crisis and the, and the conversations that, that we've been having in the community, there are many good things happening also and are being seen outside of Oak Ridge. So I wanted to share this with you in that, in that light. I'm reaching out, Sarah Means says, to touch bases with you about an upcoming Regional Solutions Advisory Committee that will be on July eighth. The advisory committee is primarily governor-appointed members that help to advise the team in their regions. Because they haven't met in some time, they're looking forward to meeting. At this solutions team, as they were talking about the agenda, Oak Ridge came up a few times, both from the air quality project and the biomass work. There were conversations about elevating the work in Oak Ridge and what a great story it is. I'm wondering if you, and this was addressed to our intern Grace, and/or the mayor or Brian would be willing to join the group to talk a little about these projects and how we're engaged in them and share with you the good, and share with them the good things that are happening. So our city administrator will be attending. Unfortunately, I will be not, I will not be able to attend as it's two days out from surgeries. So I don't think a drooling and incoherent mayor would be a good representation of Oak Ridge. But just to share with you that there is good things happening, and we are excited about the progress that we are making in, in the state and how they're helping us. I don't have any other announcements that I wanted to share. I, I am assuming, Council, Council Hollis, that you or Council Kenyon will be sharing about the fireworks, so I'm not going to mention that. And we'll move into council comments and, and announcements. Counsel, if you have any, please speak up so I can recognize you. Council Kenyon, and then Council Sledoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind you that it is the season for doing our city administrative review, and wondered if you could get those documents emailed out to the council so we can get that started.
I will add that to the business from the city council. Absolutely. Okay. Was there anything else, Council Kenyon?
No, that was all I had.
Okay, Council Sledoff, go ahead, please. You're muted, Audi.
I've got a few things here. Councilor Hallard, a few meetings back, there was a motion to decrease the water rate increase. Has there been any movement on that? And then it says, Brian, he had Eric researches, does, does have information, but he's not ready to bring it to the agenda yet. Council Kenyon wants to add the allocation of the COVID money to the next agenda. Has any of this been done?
Audi, the first comment about the water rate, if you remember, part and parcel of the fee increase was a, was a freeze in the increase of the water rate. So that conversation didn't need to be continued forward. As it stands now, we will do the annual raise to the water rate as there was no public safety fee initiated. But that is still something that could be, could be discussed. The second thing that you brought up, and, oh my gosh, I have forgotten what it was. Oh, the COVID money. Is that correct, Audi?
Yes, it is.
That's correct. The COVID money. We brought that up once before. We sent it out, we sent out the information that we had. It was brought up at last week's meeting, and the answer to that was, we don't, still don't have the direction complete from the state of Oregon as to what we can and cannot use. And we discussed it then and said that as soon as we had that direction, we would be talking about it, as well as wrapping it into other conversations about how do we use that money. But we don't have a full picture about what we can and cannot use yet. You should have received from the city administrator a packet of information in general about where, where cities can spend that money and where they can't. Actually, I think it's more of a positive where you can spend it. So you might want to refer back to that. And that will still be, that will still be pending once we get that information from the state.
Okay. In the policy, it says something about a person leads, that leads the volunteer program, potential volunteers must contact whoever prior to performing the projects and the jobs and how we want to fill in. Then it says Mayor Holston. She is a little frustrated because she documents, she sent out the council were filled in all, we could talk about them and see what was missing and what wasn't. Brian suggested bringing this back to the next meeting instead of going online by line now. And.
We did do that, and we did pass the volunteer policy, Audi.
Okay, but as the, do we need to have all of the new, all of the volunteers re-sign? I'm sorry for finding feedback. Do we have to have all the volunteers re-sign a new application?
No, we were just going to grandfather people in, I believe. And you were talking about the volunteer process, right? That's what your questions are about.
Right, right.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm tracking you.
Isn't that, you know, do they, are we going to make all the volunteers re-sign the new form? So we make it there?
Is that a recommendation that you would like to make, that the city council take up that issue?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then we, then we can definitely do that and talk about, do we want every volunteer that we currently have to re-sign the volunteer forms that we have? I, I don't see any harm in that whatsoever, and each one of our committees can make sure that that happens. Would you like to, like, give a thirty-day window for that to happen? Or a sixty-day window, or perhaps by September first, we'll have all the new signatures? What would be your suggestion?
Probably a thirty-day window, so we can get it off our books and get it taken care of. I don't see that many volunteers to re-sign, but thirty days would be, I think, applicable for this to happen.
All right.
And then also, I wanted to bring up, you brought up, do we have a code of conduct sheet in the list of forms? Okay, did that get added to the forms?
I would assume that it did. I haven't given it out to anybody recently, but we will make sure that it's there because that's what council directed.
Okay, I wanted to find out from Brian if that's happened yet.
I haven't had time to actually publish the new volunteer program. I've just been wrapped up with this budget process. So when that, I'm able to get to the volunteer program and all the forms and personalize them for the city, that'll all come out, and we'll get the updated signatures as council desires.
Perhaps thirty days might be a little bit too ambitious, Audi, considering it's summertime and we are still in the midst of, of budgets, supplementary budgets, and, and getting this put through. And as you just heard Brian say, he has to get it personalized for Oak Ridge in all the packet and then published. Would you be willing to go out sixty days so that we know this can happen?
I see Dawn's hand up. I just wondered, did she add something to add to that?
I have recognized you. I'll recognize Dawn next.
Okay, I'd be willing to go sixty days. But, but no longer.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Did you have any furthers?
Yes. I have been here, the city's well field has issues with positive results for total coliform and E. coli bacteria. For several decades, recently since 2010, both wells six and two have been positively tested for coliform. Additionally, well number two has been tested positive for E. coli on several occasions. Has that been rectified?
May I ask what you're reading from?
Page sixty-two of the council packet.
I can respond to that.
That's under the biological containment analysis.
Go ahead, Brian.
That is a very old document that was required to be submitted to IFA in order to qualify for the loan that we're asking for. Currently, and, and since I've been here, all water samples have been clean from all wells. We actually did have a false positive at the last test, which was sent back, and we did the required actions, and they declared it a false positive. So to my knowledge, all wells, all drinking water is clean.
Okay, thank you. And then page sixty-three. The 2005 OHA reported, reported identified number of high and moderate-risk potential contaminant sources that could possibly impact aquifer. Some risks such as chemical containments of soil and water at the former Pope and Talbot Mill Site, an industrial park, and the deteriorating bank of Salmon Creek near the well field that have been mitigated since the report was written and most likely no longer presents a significant hazard to the existing field. The report does correctly state that the existing well field is located nearest to high-density development. Current guidelines do not encourage the location of municipal drinking water wells in such areas due to potential of contamination from activities typically found in urban settings. It can be concluded that all the city sources, wells in such close proximity to each other develop areas create a potential of loss of the entire sources, significant of contamination should occur. That was that page. And then down here on page sixty-four, hydraulic connection and potential for substantial interference with surface water. Since 1988, Oregon revised statutes have maintained that all permitted wells producing water and confined aquifer and located less than a quarter mile from the surface water source are presumed to be hydraulically connected to the same surface water. In addition, if the rate of the appropriation from the same well is greater well or wells is greater than the percent of the presented adopted minimum perennial stream flow of the surface water source, the wells or well is assumed to have potential to cause substantial interference with the same surface body water. In non-legis, this means that both OWRB and ODFW consider the city, the city's existing well fields to be hydraulically connected to the potentially and to potentially be causing substantial interference with Salmon Creek. In 2011, ODFW sent a letter to the city stating the water rights may potentially be reduced as a result. This matter is discussed in greater detail in the following section related to water rights. The city of Oak Ridge has a number of surface The city of Oak Ridge has a number of surface and groundwater rights. All existing water certificates, permits, and transfers are summarized below in table six. Copies of all the water rights and existing correspondence reported to the rights are contained in the report.
Audi, may I interrupt you just a moment? I, I recognize that what you're reading from is the submission that we did for the loan, and we're required to put in the, required to put in past reports on our, on our water. You are reading from documents that are very old, and those documents, those issues that have been brought up. While I agree that they are extremely interesting, I've read them before, too. I would, I would suggest to you respectfully that you might want to make an appointment with Brian and go over all of those to, so we can then be presented with what your questions are. I understand that you are reading from them and you're concerned, but all of those issues have been addressed. And they are very old reports.
Okay, well, I'm just building up to the last thing.
Thank you.
Okay. The city's current water rights situation is complex and need to clarification resolution. In theory, the city has access to total groundwater rights of eight point two CFS. Three, three thousand six hundred and seventy gallons per minute from permits fifteen, twelve, and nineteen twenty. The ci- city also has access to seventeen point six one CFS, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety, eight hundred and eighty-nine GFM. The surface water from this source includes certifies, certificate certificates of fifty-seven, six oh eight, and twenty-eight, eight seventy-three, and transfer of T oh forty-seven, and permit.
Question in here, Audi?
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting to it.
You know, we do have a pretty large agenda here, and while I appreciate this, I would like to get to the question, so we can help, help move forward.
Okay, so bottom line. One of the principal issues with water rights is unless they are certified, the water listed, the water right listed above is as certificates, they are not actually owned by the by the city. So in other words, what it says here is, we've got three permits up here, and they're not, they're not owned by the city. So actually, we need to get those certified. Or we're gonna lose our volume, because it says on the next page that we don't have enough water legally. If we don't get them certified, we won't have enough water to supply our city.
You are misinterpreting what you're reading, and I would encourage you strongly to go talk to the CA and go through that. Our water rights are certified. Our wells are certified and have been for some time. I know that there were, were issues and concerns about that, but those have all been resolved for some time. I don't think that the council can delve into this, and I don't think it would be appropriate to ask for a hard and fast answer until you have a good understanding of this and have talked to the CA. I think it's important so that you have a good understanding of it, and then can report back to, to council what you've learned.
Okay, the next thing. I don't know whether I should wait till we get into this, the city administrator's statement on the supplemental.
Let's wait till we get to our supplemental budget then. If it's an item that's on our agenda, then let's talk about it during our agenda. Is there anything else?
No, I will get with Brian when, when the time comes up. Oh, there is one thing about lifelight I'd like to put in there, if you.
During our supplemental budget time.
Right.
You're welcome. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please. And Counselor Coker, I think I saw your hand pop up and down, too.
My, my question was regarding fire med, so I'll hold off till later.
Okay, sounds good. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please. You're muted, Counselor Kenyon.
Sorry about that. I wanted to say that I do agree with Audi about having volunteers re-sign, and I wonder if that's something that we need to do a motion on? And get a council to weigh in on?
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Add that to this agenda?
We can add it to the agenda, and we can do that right now, if you'd like to, and we'll just go ahead and, and make a motion. Let me make sure that we have all of it together here, so it would be a motion to have all of our currently approved volunteers reaffirm and sign the new policy when it is ready and published. Within the next sixty days.
Sorry, you cut out. What was that?
Other comments?
Are you referring to this motion? I do have something else after we're done with this motion.
This motion is on the table. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Jackie, will you please call, will you please ask for a vote from council here?
Counselor Whitney? Counselor Spleedoff? Counselor Bjornson? Counselor Hollit? Counselor Coker? Mayor Holston? Mayor Holston? Counselor Kenyon?
That passes, thank you. Counselor Kenyon, you said you had a couple of more things that you wanted to bring up, or, or whatever.
I wanted to piggyback off of what Counselor Audi Spleedoff has mentioned was something that we talked about in an earlier meeting, was the water rate increase being decreased. That was something that I had brought to the attention of council, and I would like to readdress that. We didn't, we didn't complete that.
I, I agree with you. I wouldn't say that we didn't complete it. I think that it got wrapped up into the fee, so now it's it would be appropriate to bring it back up again and talk about whether or not it would be prudent to reduce the fee. I believe the recommendation of the city administrator and staff was not to reduce the fee. We currently don't have enough money as it is, and to go backwards would be, I think, you know, counterproductive, but that is certainly something that we can do. I don't have those numbers in front of me. And so I would prefer.
To a future agenda, maybe our next meeting.
Okay, I, I think, I appreciate that. I think that would be much more appropriate to do that, so we can look at it and get a a fresh look at it.
Okay.
Next meeting, okay. Any other council comments? I don't see any other council comments. Counselor Kenyon, your hand is up. Could you put it down?
Yes, I know.
Thank you. Let's move to two business from the city administrator, ten point one. Oak Ridge Westford Police Intergovernmental Agreement. Brian, will you introduce this, please?
This is ten point one. It's the approval of the IGA with Westford to provide police law enforcement protection. Exhibits the IGA. So we currently do this, and agreements reviewed annually to consider updates. This proposed agreement for fiscal year twenty-two includes an increase in the fee of three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars fifty cents, making the new total forty thousand two sixty-three, building quarterly installments. Your choice is here to approve the IGA or modify or reject the IGA. We're recommending one in the motions before you.
Appreciate that. Council, come out here, motion, please.
I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement to provide police protection services to the city of Westford at a rate of forty thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that. This is Counselor Coker.
I see your hand up. Is that in relation to this?
Yes. Oh, is it my turn to speak on this one? My concern is, I feel like this number is really low. You know, we're talking about furloughing an officer, or I shouldn't say we're, it's proposed in the budget. And it's really, I, seems like it would be extremely difficult to be able to cover Westford when the city of Oak Ridge really is our priority, and that number just feels really low to me to be covering all those services. And I know in the past, we've talked about Westford's contract being far too low, and it seems like, you know, her at a wall right now, and this is the time that we really need to be taking a harder look at that number. I am curious to hear from Chief Martin on this one. I feel like Westford sure receives a lot of police services for pennies on the dollar. I think that's all I have, so.
To the CA, I'll, I'll speak first, and then I'll hand it off to Chief Martin. I actually sat down, or zoomed down with the city council in Westford, and let them know that depending on what does happen with the budget, if we end up having to reduce the workforce in the police department, that we would be coming back possibly to revise or even cancel this IGA. But given the fact that this, our budget was going to the very bitter end, I said, let's pass, or let's get this IGA approved. In any case, it takes you to modify or cancel this agreement, takes two months anyway. So I wanted to get at least to provide protection while it happened. I think, looking at the number of calls that we do, this is a fair number, and so, and Chief Martin can speak to that. Chief?
Yeah, was there, was there a specific question, just about the, the funds amounts?
Well, I, I've heard rumor that for Westford to contract with another agency such as the county sheriff's office, it would be more to do something like that, and I just, to me, forty thousand dollars isn't really meeting in the middle. And, you know, we're in a budget crisis here, and forty thousand dollars just seems awfully low to me, and I'm, I could be persuaded to be wrong, but right now, that number seems just way too low to me.
So what we, our contract with them is for twenty hours a month, and then emergency response. My, my concerns would be not so much the twenty hours a month patrol, it would be, but it would be if we have a reduction in staffing that, or the priorities for emergency response after hours when there's not an officer on. So I'm, that would be something that I'd have to defer to the city administrator of what decisions we would make when that time comes. I'm kind of looking into the future there.
Do you remember what the number was for Westford to have the sheriff's office contract?
It was a, it was substantially more, but that was for, I believe their offer was for one deputy, but I wasn't party to any of that. I just, I just know that they'd asked for one deputy, and it was for the price of a deputy, so they would have got and I'm talking just theoretically, I don't know for sure, but they would have had to have contract with one deputy, and so they would have got forty hours a week, and then normal county response after that forty hours. So it would have been way more coverage than we provide potentially, because they, I believe they will only contract for one full deputy at a time. But again, I'm speaking for the county. I can't really speak for them. I'm just speculating.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did sit in on a Westford city council meeting a couple of months ago when our city administrator sat down with them to talk about the potential of having to cut in Oak Ridge and how that might affect them. And I do remember the mayor of Westford stating that Westford would be willing to consider paying more to keep service, our service here, and so my, my thought was that instead of renewing a contract for just, you know, I'm, I'm assuming it's a standard percentage increase. Why wouldn't we have just come to them with like a, you know, a proposal for a significant increase?
I don't recall that the mayor said that they'd be willing to do a significant increase, however, it would have to be a very significant increase to prevent, you know, if a budget reduction happened here, to prevent a furlough of an officer. That's a sixty thousand dollar increase, so I don't have an answer for you. It's, it's something that's gonna have to, as the, as our budget shakes out, we'll have to determine, and like the chief said, my, my thought would be, we go back and say, we'll give you twenty hours, but you get no after-hours emergency response, sorry. I just look at the level of the number of calls that we do to Westford, and it's, it's minimal compared to the amount of calls that we have here in Oak Ridge.
I, I just will interject here a little bit, that first of all, a question. So does our contract expire now? Where, when are we expiring?
I don't remember the exact language.
It goes July first through July, June thirtieth.
That's what I thought, too. So, so this actually has, has expired technically, sort of kind of.
Right there.
Yeah, we're right there. So there's two issues here. You know, I agree that we have wanted to raise the amount and the cost to make sure that we were doing a little more than just breaking even. And Chief, you've come back on several occasions and talked to us about this, and previous councils also about that we are, we are doing a little bit better than breaking even. And that our limited coverage is part, is a balance to, to how much they spend, and they agree to how much they want, and what those, what that criteria is they cover, and what we don't cover. And it's a negotiation, but right now, we're in the, we're in the midst of, can we, can we afford to provide service to them if we reduce our staff? Because we're, we have some unanswered questions. And we know that we can't raise it enough to keep another staff on here. And I hear what you're saying, Counselor Hall, because I remember that, a conversation quite a while ago, too, about how much it would cost, and it was, if I remember right, the cost kind of took my breath away. It was pretty high. And that, that's what they would have to do. I, I don't want to leave my neighbors without any coverage at all, but I do think it should be, I'm reluctant also to, to say we should, we should increase the cost, when in fact, I may be coming back to them and saying, we're going to reduce the coverage, which in essence is increasing the cost. So I would be in favor of just leaving it as it is, but knowing full well that the preemptive conversation that our CA had with Westford might actually come into, into play, that we may have to say, we're reducing our coverage. If indeed, we don't reduce our coverage, I don't see any reason why we can't go back to them and say, in light of the costs that are increasing, we would like to increase our coverage, or increase our, our fee to you. our coverage or increase our, our fee to you also. Those are just my thoughts. Counselor Coker, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so that was my question being if we put this through now, we can go back and make adjustments? Or are we stuck with this number for a certain amount of time before we can revisit it?
A three-month termination.
We have three months written notice to terminate or change. So, which is why I wanted to get this through, get our budget done and figure out what we, what actions we need to take to make it feasible. So given that we, given that we need three months, I'd say get this through and then let's look at it once we figure out the supplemental budget.
All righty, I agree. Thank you.
Get off and then Counsel Hallid.
Okay, I'd like to find out, do we still have an officer unpaid administrative leave?
We do, but I'd ask what, how is that related to this?
Well, if he's unpaid administrative leave, he is still in the budget. And so if we have to cut officers, we can't cut him until it's the solve. So in other words, we're down not just one officer, but two.
No, I would not terminate until the issue, current issue at hand is resolved, expected to be within two weeks, according to the law, the city attorney and the police chief.
Okay. And another thing too is, don't we also have a contract with Lowell for our police department?
Yes, we do.
And how is that going to affect them?
Theirs is a slightly simpler contract. It's twenty, it's a set number of hours each month, primarily done by one of our reserve officers who lives in Lowell. And there is no emergency response requirement. So it's a much simpler contract and much more affordable for us.
And I can speak to that one real quick. As, as far as Lowell is concerned, Lowell, we turn a profit completely because Lieutenant Ritz does most of the patrol time in Lowell and then the officers do when they go back and when they come back from jail usually is the time that we try to commit the regular officers to that. So we're going through that way anyway. And, and it's like City Administrator said, it's a much simpler contract. We just provide forty hours a month and we do traffic for them and for their municipal court and we assist them with our code enforcement primarily.
So there wouldn't be, if there was a reduction, then that wouldn't affect them?
No, typically it wouldn't because Lieutenant Ritz does that most of the work there.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Hallid?
I may have lost a little bit what I was going to say, but so the contract, West Fur signed it in April, correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
My, my, my worry is that we're entering a contract with them to provide them coverage. And my personal feelings is forty thousand dollars is too low for what the state of our affair, our city is in. For me, it's a definite that we need to raise that money. It's not a maybe or what can you do? It's a definite, that number has to be increased. So however, I one hundred percent agree with Mayor Holston that I do not want to leave our neighbors uncovered. I would hate to see that. And I realize some of the crime that happens there trickles into Oak Ridge and vice versa. So I would reluctantly vote in favor of this, but my, my vote would be in that they are fully aware that at least one of their council, one of Oak Ridge's counselors intends for this to be increased in three months. So I'm kind of wondering if any of the other counselors have thoughts on that and what their feelings are. I kind of feel that Mayor Holston agrees with that, but I'm curious what the other counselors think.
I agree with that as well, Chrissy. The number is low, but we've got to put it in now the way it is and then revisit in three months with the, with the hike, I think is how it's going to have to be.
Spleedoff, you still have a hand up, so I don't know.
Yes, it is. I, I think we should increase it too. And it's a worry to me that if you don't, if we sign this now, we have to wait three months before we can do it. Is that right, Brian?
The three-month written notice required if you're going to terminate or alter.
So could we approve it and then give them a notice immediately that we want to renegotiate for a different number?
That was my thought, that we would hammer out what our budget's actually going to look like and decide whether we're going to just alter their contract and reduce the scope or jack up their rates.
Okay, I would agree to that. That's all I.
Yeah, I think that makes good count, good sense, Counsel Hallid, with the understanding that, you know, we are going to pursue that as soon as we know, know where we stand right away. Counsel Bjornson, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. It's completely reasonable to approve this as written. So they still have coverage with the notification that we may be looking for changes at the deadline of three months after our supplemental is figured out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, do we need to make a motion on this or?
Have a motion on the table.
Okay.
We're in the discussion phase right now.
Yeah, okay. So everything looks good then right now, if we can do it in three months. But we need to direct the city administrator to get this out as soon as possible.
He has stated that that is his intention to do that. So Jackie will be, can please call for a vote. I'm going to go ahead and read the motion again since we've, we've had some discussion. And this motion was made by Bobby, seconded by, by Counsel Coker. I move we approve the intergovernmental agreement to provide police protection services to the city of West Fur at a rate of forty thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I'm sorry, did you say something?
Sorry, I just saw, I just saw your thumb pop up there. Was that a yes or you wanted to talk?
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to do the thumb. I was trying to raise my hand. So I think it would be worthwhile to do a little amendment to this, to notice West Fur that we will be wanting to amend the contract. So.
I thought that would be a second motion from the council.
Well, we could do it as a second or just add it to this.
Do it as a second since this is a contractual thing. We'll approve the contract and then we'll do a second.
Okay, that works.
Jackie, go ahead and call for a vote, please.
Counsel Kenyon?
Hi.
Counselor Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor Coker?
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Counselor Hallid?
I.
Mayor Holston?
Hi. That passes. Thank you. And along with the discussion that we just have, I'll entertain a second motion. Barkley, will you please mute yourself? You're giving us a lot of feedback. Thank you. Barclay? Hold on, Counsel, I think it stopped. There it goes. Go ahead, go ahead, Counsel Hallid.
I move that the council directs our city administrator to enter into negotiations with the city of Rust Fur to find an increase in the contract for police services between the city of West Fur and Oak Ridge after we have come to a decision on the supplemental budget.
I'll second.
Counsel Spleedoff, you seconded. Thank you. All right, any discussion? Before I spoke out loud. So Bobby, I see a hand and then Counsel Kenyon, you wanted to speak also. Bobby, go ahead.
Okay, so with the motion, I think it's good, but I'm wondering if we don't want to also include, because we were talking earlier about an or, so either increase the dollar amount that we bill them or amend the contract to remove the part for responding to emergency calls. So I think it would be worthwhile to add that.
My suggestion is that would pigeonhole it way too much. I think we need to just, we don't know what our, what our situation will be, whether it will be, you know, that we're reducing services or we're increasing services and can, or just increasing costs, but not increasing the service. I don't think we want to pigeonhole it too much.
Well, no, I agree. But that, that was kind of what I felt like we were doing by putting, saying that we wanted to look at what we bill monthly. So that's why I suggested that.
So I think we, we left it pretty open that we would be entered into, enter into, into a negotiation.
Okay.
To increase the contract. And if it turns out it won't be that way, I think, you know, we're all intelligent to do that.
Well, yeah.
I think what Bobby's saying is that it's an either, or we increase the contract or decrease services. Is that what you were saying, Bobby?
Yeah, that was what I was trying to get at.
Can we just change, make it a, an increase, all right, increase or decrease? So Bobby, or Counsel Hallid, are you going to?
Yes, yes.
Amendment?
Yes, I will accept that amendment.
Okay, perfect. And Counsel Spleedoff, you seconded it.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Kevin Martin, Kevin Martin. Chief Martin, go ahead, please.
Just, just one, one thing, this, can I maybe speak a little bit out of turn with the administrator? If we're gonna do a renegotiation, that there's probably a different kind, multiple options, increase, decrease, or change services. Because I had a couple ideas, but I present them to the city administrator first.
Thank you, Chief. And I think that's what I was, what I was getting at is you don't want to pigeon your hole yourself. There may be some creative changes that you come up with when you talk to West Fur. And, and I, and I hope that we would be willing to, to be that, be that malleable and, and creative.
Should I just, should I just leave my motion a little more, something a little more open-ended and just say that we direct the city administrator to renegotiate the contract?
Yes.
Would you agree to that, Audi?
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's okay. And I apologize that I couldn't get out the words that Chief Martin expressed.
Understand that any revision will be coming back to council for a signature, so.
Exactly, exactly. This will not be the last time we see this. All right, Jackie, please call for a vote.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Mayor Holston?
I.
Counselor Coker?
I.
Counselor Hallid?
I.
Counselor Whitney?
I.
Counsel Kenyon?
I. Everyone, Counsel Whitney, I see you have your hand up. Was there something you wanted to say before we move on to ten point two?
No, I just never took it down.
Okay, let's move on to ten point two. Brian, go ahead, please.
Approval of the IFA Safe Order Drinking Revolving Loan Fund application. The application was attached as well as an extensive background information that was required, all five hundred pages of it. We're looking for a motion from Florida approved. So as you know, well, number two is our primary producer. It's in severe need of maintenance and refurbishment. So we'd like to get that done. This will require an IFA loan, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately. This is an application, not an approval for the loan. So we're asking that council approve the application submission. And that's our recommendation and the motion is before you.
Thank you, Brian. I just want to clarify, when you say this is an application, an approval for the application of the loan?
Yeah.
Will we then also see the approval come through? Or how does that work?
Yeah, well, this is to get the intent of council that they're okay with taking on a loan. And then if approved for the loan, then it would come back to you as a contract that we would have to sign in order to finalize it.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Do I hear a motion, counsel?
I move we approve the submission of a loan application to Business Oregon for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to fund improvements to well number two.
I'll second the motion, Counsel Hallid.
We are open for discussion. Bobby, you have a hand up? Go ahead.
Sorry, is that, I can never keep the well straight, but isn't well number two our main producer for water?
It is our primary producer, yes.
Okay, yeah, so it's really vital that we.
Yeah.
Keep that, keep that well functioning.
We're intended with this spring, but COVID got IFA way behind. And so as it got in the summer, we can't afford to take down well number two during the summer during the high, high months. So that's why it's going into the fall.
Right. Counsel Spleedoff, I see your hand. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I wanted to find out, does this, because I read in some of the reports, whether they're old or new or what, that it wasn't sealed and we're getting E. coli in number two. And that's a whole report, whatever. Now, during this new procedure, you're gonna put in pump and pipe and screens and everything, is that going and refurbished the well? Is that gonna include the sealing of well number two?
Yes, as I mentioned, the well is currently sealed. It's, there hasn't been any contamination since I've been here. And so I don't anticipate that we're going to think more, it will be done properly.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Spleedoff and Counsel Whitney, if you'll take your hands down, please. Go ahead, Counsel Kenyon. Thank you. I wanted to find out if this refurbishment is replacing the original plan to drill another well.
No, it was actually part of the entire overall arching plan to, to refurbish the water systems improvement. So it, it would have to be done regardless of whether we had a new well or not. It's, the stuff is so old that by doing this, it will actually.
Okay, real quick.
Go ahead.
I just wondered where we're at with the movement on whether we're going to get another well or do a filter or what?
No.
In addition to this.
No, we have no plans for another well.
Call for a vote, please.
Counselor Coker?
I.
Counselor Whitney?
I.
Mayor Holston?
I.
Counselor Hallid?
I.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Counsel Kenyon?
I.
Counsel Bjornson?
I.
On down to ten point three, Brian?
Okay, ten point three is a remaining RTNP application that was inadvertently left out of the larger package you saw earlier. Okay, 10.3 is a remaining RTMP application that was inadvertently left out of the larger package you saw earlier. So it's, you approve the actual, the, the, the mass sum of them on 617. This one, as I mentioned, was left out, and so I'd like to request the city council review and render a decision on this particular application. It's for $750, and your choices are to approve or disapprove. We're recommending approval, there's money left on the table with RTMP that the committee has been discussing, and this would be for the middle fork open support, so the motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. Council, do your motion.
I move we approve the RTMP application for $750 to the Oak Ridge Disc Golf Club to support the middle fork open.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon, do I hear a second?
I'll second it, Counselor Bjornson.
Thank you, Counselor Bjornson. Council, this is open for discussion. Do I hear any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Okay. Counselor Kenyon recommends making the posting, making any decisions until the council has had time to review our policies and distribution of funds. And
Are you?
Do we have a policy on RTMP, the RTMP funds?
We have an old policy on RTMP funds, we have not approved the new policy, as we, as we know, we discussed this when we looked over the other RTMP, so I guess I'm confused here. Are you speaking for Counselor Kenyon, or are you speaking for yourself? What?
I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, and so
I want you to know if they, if they, if they're done, and should we be distributing these funds without going over and renewing and finding out exactly what we're supposed to do?
So you're, you're suggesting that we shouldn't distribute these funds until we have a policy in place? Is that what your suggestion?
That's right, a new policy in place.
There was a decision made on 617, and you distributed to seven organizations RTMP funds. This one was just inadvertently left out, so I would recommend letting, letting the RTMP committee find that new policy, but moving forward, so we don't shortchange these people at the expense, at their expense.
How long a timeline can we have that at?
It's up to the RTMP committee. I, I have no control over when they develop their policy.
This event is July 31st and August 1st, just for your awareness. Counselor, is there any, any other discussion? Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Audie, that we did approve all of the other RTMP requests, like Brian mentioned earlier in June, without having that policy updated yet, but with the understanding that the RTMP committee, committee, which myself and Mayor Holston are both on, is working on this, and it is something that will be coming to council when we're ready. So we're good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're looking into it, it's not dropped.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion. Jackie, please call for a vote. Counselor Kenyon, can you put your hand down, please? Thank you.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Passes, thank you, council. Let's, we're gonna move on now, and we're gonna move on to the addition to our agenda, which was an emergency ordinance. I think we have 10.4, which is our Fourth of July celebration, and then we have this emergency ordinance, they kind of go hand in hand. So I, I would like the council to look at the emergency ordinance first. That is, yeah, the title of that is Emergency Resolution 102021. And this is addressing the drought conditions and fire danger level. So Brian, would you like to introduce this for us?
Yes, ma'am. As you said, it's Resolution 102021, it's an emergency resolution. And so with the current drought conditions and the fire danger level actually increasing just recently, the staff would like to submit an emergency declaration for council consideration that would prohibit fireworks of any kind within city limits. The South Cascade Office of ODF has, will raise the fire danger level too high on, actually yesterday. So we're recommending to approve Resolution 102021, and the motion's here before you.
Thank you. So I think what I'd like to do is just have a bit of discussion before this, because we may have some difference, different wording that we want to do for this. And in light of the Green Waters Park coming up, celebration for the Fourth of July also. So let's have, let's spend about five minutes discussing this, and then we can move in. Counselor Spleedoff, you have your hand up, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to make sure and clarify that we can still have the fireworks at the Green Waters Park, but it will eliminate all fireworks in the city limits of Oak Ridge, excepting for the fireworks at the Green Waters.
And that is exactly what is open for discussion.
I'll draw your attention to section three, which I've got on the screen here, and it talks about the last sentence, says fireworks displays approved by the Oak Ridge City Council, the Fire Department in Oregon State Fire Marshal exempt from this restriction, so that would be your avenue to approve the Fourth of July fireworks, if you're so inclined.
Thank you. I agree with this.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Spleedoff. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, how do we plan on enforcing this if we adopt this?
The police chief, it's an all-hands effort on the Fourth of July, and there is a $500 citation that can be written against it. So that would be the idea, is that on the Fourth of July, we would be searching for personal use fireworks and, and writing citations. Have I got it right, chief?
Yes, I'd like to clarify, though, that we could probably use 30 or 40 more officers for that day. It is going to be tough to enforce this with just five of us, so. I don't know if anyone remembers the amount of fireworks we had last year, but we could probably have 1,000 officers, and it'd be hard to handle all the fireworks, so. I'm not making excuses for us, but I'm just saying, we usually have other crimes happen too, so we will do our best. But it, it will be tough to stop the fireworks. And my, my one concern that I would like the council to, to think of in their minds, and also they're gonna have to address the citizen, is we are going to get, the, the city is shooting off large fireworks that are just as dangerous as personal fireworks, even though a lot of the personal fireworks people will be shooting off will be illegal, but we are going to run into that a lot, so that should be in your minds.
Counselor Spleedoff?
I just wanted to find out with the people shooting them off, how how are we going to enforce it all? And how are we gonna, are we gonna send a letter out to everyone? Or how do we make this out there, that people know that this is ordinance? Instead of just coming up and saying, hey, you shot a fireworks, and we just passed the ordinance yesterday, and you're, you have a $500 fine. So that's why I'm wanting to know, how are we gonna get the information?
Well, to clarify, to clarify one thing, most of the fireworks that, like last year, are illegal anyway. I've been a police officer for 26 years, and every place I've worked, unless they've passed a city ordinance that says no fireworks, pretty much ignores fireworks complaints during the Fourth of July, the time before, the time after is, is more enforcement. But we, our hands will be full, and I'm sure we'll probably end up writing some tickets.
So we don't need to notify the public then?
We, my
Because it's already a law.
My intent is to give everybody a warning first and some education, but then if they don't follow in our profession, we try to gain compliance. If we don't gain compliance, then issuance of citation will be the next action.
Thank you.
Counselor Hollitt, go ahead, please.
Well, I I am actually very torn on this one. Um, I 100% agree with Chief Martin, there is going to be no possible way for Oak Ridge to enforce this. I mean, it's just absolutely not feasible. Other cities like City of Eugene is not enforcing it as well. They're asking people not to use fireworks, however, they're also telling people do not call 911 if you see someone starting, you know, lighting up fireworks, and so are other cities all over Oregon. I've been really paying attention to this quite a bit. I also agree that most of the times, the fires happens with illegal fireworks. We had one in Oak Ridge a few years back, where it was somebody blowing off illegal fireworks, and it landed on a roof, so this, or this resolution here would not have covered that, you know, illegal fireworks are illegal fireworks. They're not supposed to be doing them anyway, it's kind of like same thing as gun laws. So I would, my personal preference is that the city take more of a preventative educational stance on it, and really ask people to go to the professional fireworks show, watch them there, where there's professionals, and there's literally hundreds of firefighters, and, you know, ask them to leave the fireworks for another time. And, you know, in the past, we've put out a lot of safety information that if you are going to do fireworks at home, you know, you have a bucket of water, you have a perimeter set around your fireworks, you're not touching the duds, and, and all those sorts of things. I have seen that be far more helpful than setting a ban, and I, and on the other hand, you know, I fully realize people wanting to put a ban, because even with the legal fireworks, people use those unsafe around dry grass, and there's obviously the potential there to create a fire, so, like I said, I'm really kind of torn with this, kind of on the fence, and yeah, I'm not sure if it's, if it's worth us doing, just because we, we don't have any way to enforce this at all. That's all I have.
Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I was just wondering if a ban like this would allow a city to tell retailers that they can't sell fireworks?
We had that opportunity when Braves applied for their permit some time ago, but given the urgency and the temporal nature of this particular, where we are in this extreme danger, I don't think, I think that horse is already gone. It's, they've already gotten approval to sell fireworks, and they have been for several weeks, so I don't see shutting them down.
That's what I was concerned about. So is this ordinance gonna be something where the police could show up, where there's, you know, six-year-olds in their driveway lighting sparklers and those little worms and stuff like that? Is that are they gonna get told?
Well, I trust, I trust the police to, to use their judgment and how they go about enforcing this, obviously, you know, a small child supervised. It's probably not gonna be their primary focus for going after fireworks, but given the fire danger, I just don't see a real choice that the city has. It's unbelievable. Now, the condition that we're in right now, it's we're so far ahead of where we were last year, which was a terrible year.
Right.
I understand, but I'm just feeling like illegal fireworks are gonna be a bigger concern, and that's what we should be going after. We don't even need an ordinance to do that, and if all of our police attention is gonna be on the illegal fireworks anyways, you know, this is gonna damper a lot of a lot of people from, from having a fun and safe little
I think it sends a signal, I think it sends a signal that we're not, we're serious, and that we cannot allow, or cannot recommend that you even use fireworks.
Counselor Whitney, go ahead, please.
Yes, so I wholeheartedly support this ordinance. You know, I lived here since 1972, and I've seen several fires that have started close to Oak Ridge, and at times where we didn't have the fire danger and fire levels that we have right now, and those spread very quickly, and I think it's important that we protect our community as much as possible, and this is providing a level of protection to them. Everything is extremely dry, you know, the heat dome really did some damage to a lot of different plants, a lot of different shrubs. Trees are very dry, you know, normally our fire season is, the high fire season is in September. This time, we're looking at it right now, so you know, it feels like this is kind of unprecedented, and we really need to look at this seriously, and and I think this will give the police a little more teeth in dealing with people that are not being safe in the way they handle fireworks, and I mean, it just helps keep our community safe, in my opinion. And, and I, and I totally understand with wanting to celebrate, and I enjoy that, my children enjoy that, my family enjoys it. But I think at this point with how dry things are, I think it's very important that we be as safe as we can.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. I'm just gonna chime in here, and my opinion is that I wholeheartedly agree with this. I totally understand the concern about how do you enforce it? Nobody wants to put a damper on everyone's fun. However, we, as a community, have to recognize that we are in extreme fire danger. Maybe that's not what the ticket, the little meter says right now, but we know how dry our ground is. We know how dry our forest is, and we need to make a statement to our community that says, be as safe as you possibly can. We are going to do everything that we can to keep you safe. We are going to empower our police to actively look for those that are not being safe. That's how we protect our community. I agree, those that are gonna do illegal fireworks, we already have laws in Oregon that says, if your fireworks goes any higher than 12 inches off the ground, it is illegal, and we know that we have a proliferation of those. The city of Springfield, although they have said, don't call 911, they have given a phone number out to report fireworks of any kind, and have said that fireworks of any kind will be confiscated. So I, I understand that our police force is thin, but with all of our firefighters over at Green Waters, perhaps we should consider having them patrolling the streets also, and reminding folks, hey, that's not. We have a community fireworks display planned council, and as a community. It behoves us to say, sometimes you have to make a sacrifice, and the sacrifice this year is, let's not go out of our way to burn our town down. Let's see, Counselor, Chief Martin, I'd like to hear from you, and then I'm running out of, and then Counselor Hollitt, and then Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead.
Well, just one quick thing I'd like to say is, I believe if the, the council passes this, Well, just one quick thing I'd like to say is I believe if the the council passes this, it shows their support. For our enforcement actions and we will do the best we can to educate. This will help us with problem locations that we have some teeth and. With all the police reform out, there's one of the, the, the buzz terms in our profession now is government, a strong governmental interest. And this ordinance gives us a strong governmental interest to contact pa- people and uh. Try to give them them education and gain compliance before there's any enforcement action taken. Uh, with fireworks in general, I do not believe there's a strong governmental interest because so. So many law enforcement across the state and the nation ignore that during the Fourth of July. So this ordinance gives us what's called a strong governmental interest. And taking enforcement action if the need comes to that. Of course, we want to gain compliance through education first, but. That being mined, even in years past, we've had people that just had a disregard for anybody. Or anything with their having fun and so this will help us with those issues.
Um, go ahead, Counselor Hollit.
So I have a couple more things I want to say. One is that I just want to make sure that the council is aware that this resolution. Only covers the city of Oak Ridge. So that means people in the Hazel Dell area that in front of their street or whatever are. Doing fireworks or even um, on Odell Lane, I believe it is. They are not a part of the city. So that means there are still places. That can do um, legal fireworks. It would only cover the city limits. My next thing is, so I remember last year there were dozens and dozens of illegal fireworks. Going off um, all over the city and I remember I thought um, we were told. That there were no citations issued last year for illegal fireworks. So is what I'm hearing is that. We did not issue any citations for illegal fireworks last year. But we are going to issue citations for legal fireworks that the city has chosen to ban. I just want to make sure that that is clear. What I'm hearing.
We're going to issue. We're going to issue citations for people that don't take a warning. That don't pay attention when we do warn them to stop shooting off fireworks. And yes, we will write citations, whether it be legal, Oregon legal fireworks or illegal fireworks if they don't pay attention to the warning.
All right, because we sure took a lot of flack last year because citations were not issued to people lighting off illegal fireworks last year.
Exactly. And this year we will, at least I hope with it, we do do. And I really hope that what this does, if if we choose to pass. It is that it, it, it gives the community an understanding. That we are not going to talk out of both sides of our mouth. We are not going to say how hard, how high our emergency uh. Our forests are and how important it is for us to be safe and clean up around our buildings. But it's okay because we know you want to celebrate to go ahead and do it this one time. I trust my law enforcement to look at it and prioritize those illegal fireworks. And look for legal fireworks that are perhaps being done unsafely or in an area where that is questionable. Um, I just, I just think that we need to make a stand on it, but um, you know, that is, that is my opinion. Um. Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead, please.
Okay, also, I think it was the governor put out that's uh, about the shooting of any. Powdered. Equipment, rifles, anything. And that's what, is the gun range within the city limits or the outside of it?
Gun range is within city limits and in the uh. Contract or IGA, not IGA, but a contract we have with them. When the uh, level, fire danger level goes to extreme, they have to close down the gun range.
Okay, that's a big concern because they said that they've, I think it was the governor that posted that uh, no. No firearms. And they're saying no mowing lawns if your lawns are. Are brown. The green ones are okay.
Go ahead, Audi.
So, thank you for that information, Ryan.
Go ahead, Counselor Hollid, I see your hand up. Oh, okay, down it goes. Okay, so having had this discussion, we have before us a motion. Um, and I would entertain a motion at this time from council.
I move, we approve resolution ten dash twenty-twenty-one declaring a state of emergency. Related to extreme heat and the dangers of fireworks and prohibiting the use of fireworks within the city of Oak Ridge.
Counselor Whitney, do I hear a second? Is that Counselor Spleedoff? Okay. All right, um, considering we've already had discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenian?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, council for that.
I have one more thing I want to say on that. Can we make sure that a notice is put up on the city's um, Facebook page? Uh, right away, addressing what we just spoke about, and I think it needs to be um. Really important that it is addressed in there that we are going to have a police presence. And maybe um. Consensus from council, yes or no?
Yes, absolutely. We will make sure that that happens.
Okay. Yes, and encourage them to go to the community show. Yes.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, I agree, I agree uh, that that would be an option. Uh, so, having said that, let's move on to ten point four, the Fourth of July celebration. Um, that is in your packets. Uh, let me get you it here. Go ahead, Brian.
Hey, this is uh, Oak Ridge Fourth of July Celebration ten point four and the application was the uh, in the exhibit. Looking for a motion from the floor. Um, so, given the significance of the event and the current drought conditions, uh, I'm having city council approve this uh. Display of fireworks at Green Waters Park. You know, sick. The, as I mentioned, they're raising their uh, fire level too high, actually has already happened. Its fiscal impact was the twenty-one hundred dollars already approved to support the event. So I'd like to change my staff recommendation. I had a conversation with the Forest Service Fire Warning Officer or Fire Management Officer. He mentioned that ODF will not have a presence at the display, though the Forest Service will, as will the Oak Ridge Fire Department. He showed the, expressed some concern about the pyrotechnics. So as, from a staff perspective, I would recommend um, having a celebration, but uh, not having the pyrotechnics as part of that celebration. Uh, and the motions before you.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Um. All right. So you've heard that the staff recommendation, recommendation has changed and um, I am. I, I, I guess I'm asking for a motion at this time.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Audi.
I move, we approve the Oak Ridge Fourth of July fireworks if the fire danger level remains below extreme.
I'll second that. I, go ahead, body. Counselor Whitney.
Um, so do we know what sort of liability the city would have if? God forbid, we were to have a fire from this?
So I, I tried to reach out to the city insurance agent. I mean, the, the organization that the, the fireworks committee. Uh, did present a insurance with, I think it was a two million dollar uh, policy with the city named as insured. So that would be the primary um. Insurance holder would be that, that policy. But I can't tell you right now because uh, he didn't respond to my calls uh, today. That, what the CIS position is.
Okay, so it, so a two million dollar policy, though, so say we had a fire across the river and Forest, Forest Service land. After the two million dollar policy is paid, then they would probably charge us, do you think?
Likely, yes.
So, um. I don't know, I, I am. Torn on so many levels because I enjoy this. I've always enjoyed going to this event, but it's just um. Well, like I said, it's just unprecedented times and I don't know if it's worth putting the community at risk of having the. Pyrotechnics. You guys have already planned so many great events and um, have so many things going on that are just fantastic. At this event, and I think it's a wonderful thing that you guys have put together. Um, I just am very concerned about the fireworks portion.
Counselor Hollit, go ahead, please.
Well, first I want to say that I am deeply disappointed in Brian for not mentioning this in the resolution. He actually pointed out in the resolution. That that did not include the fireworks show, but then low and behold, the next thing that he wants to bring up is this. I find that. Really, you know, unfair that that should have, conversation should have taken place simultaneously. Um, I have spoke to other fire officials and I am not sure which one Brian spoke to. Maybe we spoke to different ones, but um. What was expressed was that they would prefer that. A professional level fireworks show commence and that generally, most people decide. Um, to go to the professional show and then they go ahead and choose not to buy the personal fireworks. Um. And so that was their recommendation and then um. I thought it was ODF, but it could have been a US Forest Service person, but we do have US Forest Service um, engine. Attending the event as well as inbound crew, um, multiple, multiple people. So. I mean, I just find it really um, frustrating that this wasn't brought up during the resolution when it was known about. I, um. Yeah, I, I don't, I have looked at other cities. Um, Harrisburg is continually continuing their professional fireworks show. I've talked to them almost daily. I checked in with Bend. Bend has two professional fireworks shows happening. I read that Redmond is continuing theirs. Um, so far I have not seen an area cancel their um, professional level, not to say that it hasn't happened, but. As far as I know, most of them are still happening, including rodeos, um. Lots of events that are in much drier areas than what Oak Ridge is and, and something else I do want to point out that. In July, Oak, this, this is typical for July for Oak Ridge to be in high. It's not, I mean, the temperatures that we saw a few days ago. Are completely unprecedented, but it's not unprecedented for us to have a fire danger of high in July. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Hollit. Counselor Bjornson, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just, um, on a personal level, I feel like if we canceled the professional show, that would drive more. People to get private fireworks in which it would be more dangerous for uh, wildfires and house fires. Um, I do have a question for Counselor Hollit. I've heard mentioned a couple of times that people are worried about. A fire across the river. Will there be a Forest Service engine or an inbound engine on that side of the river just to cover all of?
I was told that there was a US Forest Service um, engine that was going to be stationed over there on the Laduke side of the river. We, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Spleedoff, go ahead, please. Counselor Hollit, would you pop your hand down? Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Okay, so say there is a fire and you said it's a two, two thousand dollar?
Million.
Two million dollar. Okay, now. If they're, they go out, are the people that are putting it on responsible for the. Is say they're more than two million dollars of damage, are they responsible for that or is the city responsible for that?
Well, I'm sure that if someone wanted to pursue it, they would probably go after both of us because they want, you know, they want to be repaid for what it cost them to fight this fire. So I would expect that they would. Go after all parties involved.
The way, I think, the way things work. Um, so. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff, did you have another question? I'm sorry.
Nope, thank you.
Okay. So I have a question, Counselor Hollit, you said that you spoke to. That US Forest Service insured that there will be an engine on a Laduke side. Who did you speak with?
Matt Peterson is the one for the Forest Service and the other one we spoke to was, um. His name was Nate.
Yes, I don't remember his last name. Um, okay, thank you.
I'm looking it up right now.
Um, okay, um, my concerns with this is, is uh, two million dollar policy is great. I'm glad we have it. Um, I don't think that even begins to cover what we would need if we, um, if a fire did occur. So, you know. We're just kind of going to set that on, on the side bench here. Um, but you do have insurance in place. You explained to me that there was a safety plan in place. Um, you explained to me that you had approval from, um. What is that, that you have to get approval of for the fireworks, Chrissy?
The state fire marshal.
Fire marshal has given you uh, approval and that has, state fire marshal has not rescinded any approvals, to my knowledge, anyway.
The state fire marshal approves everyone in the whole state and to my knowledge.
Thank you. And also, um, I do want to point out that I don't think Ben and Redmond are good comparisons, but I understand the comparison. Um, I, my concern is that we sit in this bowl surrounded by tinder dry and yes, we normally have um, these kind of. Levels, um, but after this last heat, um, I watched well-established huge fir trees brown out. And after inquiring um, into experts as to why they browned out. They browned out not because of the intense heat. They browned out because they were unable to pull any more moisture out of the ground. To send it to the ends of their branches. What that means is that our ground is extremely dry. Extremely dry and that scares the, it just scares me to death. Um, I want us to have a fireworks show, but I also want us to make sure that we are going to be safe. And we can take all the precautions that we want. And I know that based on last year and based on this year, from what I've seen so far. That there's been a tremendous effort to make sure that everyone is going to have a wonderful time and that we are going to be as safe as we possibly can. But the bottom line is that this is a roll of the dice. And that is what, what each of us are doing is rolling the dice. It, it might be okay, it might not be okay. So we have to consider that and I really. Um, I appreciate Brian's change of his recommendation based on information that he has received. That is his legal obligation as city administrator to do that. And then it becomes our obligation to decide where we go from that. It wasn't meant as a underhanded thing. It was meant as something that you do your duty. And you do due diligence and you do it the right way. So I applaud him for doing that. Um, it's up to us to decide. Now whether we want to move forward. And I just want to say this because I want not only council to hear this, but the community to hear this. Whether we approve fireworks or we don't approve fireworks or we have a community show or we don't have a community show is not an indication of your patriotism. It is not an indication of that, that you want to have fun or you don't want to have fun. It is not. A label that you are a wet blanket or not a wet blanket. It, this is a community concern about fire hazard and safety, period. Um, and I just think that we should keep that in mind as we move um, into a vote. So. Given that, um. this has been moved and seconded. Jackie, let's call for a vote, please. Oh, wait, Jackie. Counselor Coker, your hand popped up.
Can I have the motion reread, please?
Certainly. The motion that hand is, I move, we approve the Oak Ridge Fourth of July fireworks if the fire danger level remains below extreme.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jackie? Please call for a vote.
Yes, Counselor Spleedoff? Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Nay.
Mayor Holston? Mayor Holston?
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
That passes. That is terrific. I know that a good time is going to be had by all, and I am so impressed with how much the committee has done toward this, and and if you don't know about this, I don't know how you couldn't. Do you have posters up, Hollitt, or is it just Facebook and word of mouth?
There's posters all over town and all the way down Highway fifty eight.
Awesome. That's great. That's great. I'm glad to hear it. Okay, let's move on then. We are going to move on to ten point five, which is a concerts in the park request.
Just a reminder, it's nine o'clock.
Counsel, it's nine o'clock, nine oh one. We have several things still remaining. What is your, Brian, is there anything on this agenda at this point? Well, there are many weighty things on this agenda. Is there anything that is remaining on this agenda that it has a timeframe that would put us in jeopardy?
I personally would like to see the public hearing happen for that property sale.
Okay, all right.
Some of them can probably slide. The fee schedule would be nice, but it can slide till the fifteenth.
Counsel, I'm going to suggest that we move to number fourteen, the public hearing. This involves the sale of a piece of pub, of property. I think it's important that we do this in a timely manner, one way or the other, so that the individual involved has direction. Counselor Bjornson, I see your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that we consider doing the most important things as quickly as possible. I very much apologize. I've been up since four this morning. I'm fading.
You are fading. Okay, let's get this done. We are moving into public hearing number fourteen point one. This is an open public hearing on the sale of, on the sale of property. Get to where I need to be here. We will open a public hearing. That public hearing is now open. Hold on, I'm getting there.
On the agenda, Bill Mayor, I've got a kind of a preamble that might work.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Per OS two two one point seven two five, the governing body must hold a public hearing to hear testimony from interested persons for the, any sale of real city, city real property. Property in question is lot thirty four at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park. Map and tax lot twenty one thirty five fifteen zero 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 four thousand. Property is owned heavy industrial property. City is selling the property to enable continued development at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park. The proposed buyer is Middle Fork Management, Property Management LLC, Metal Fabrication and Sculpture. The sale price is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and an indemnity equally share utility extension infrastructure project valued at ninety five thousand. The appraised value was three eighty nine. Fiscal impact again is three hundred and ninety five thousand seven fifty estimated on the project price. Your options are to, well, we'll get to the motion later. We can go into the public hearing now.
All right, we are now moving into a public hearing. I will entertain statements of the public in favor. The process for doing that will be to unmute yourself and then, and then say your name so that I can recognize you. Oh, we are, we are listening to statements in favor. Trudy Hammond, I see your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, four seven seven five two Berry Street. I am definitely in favor of, of this company purchasing this property, and I'm hoping that within the sales contract, there can be some contingency with local employment included. Thank you.
Thank you, Count. Thank you, Trudy. I appreciate it. I am listening for statements in favor.
I've got one, and I can't figure out how to raise my hand.
That's fine. I saw your hand. Go ahead, Sue.
I, I think it's super exciting to have art in town, and specifically because, you know, being part of the mountain bike community, we often talk about mountain biking being part of economic stimulus or economic revitalization, and here we are. We have this another chapter, another offering to bring art to town, and while it's, while it's a business and not necessarily in our uptown, having more art in Oak Ridge is going to do nothing but expand our offers, and I'm super excited to have more art in town. I think it's a great, a great use of an existing space.
I will now close comments for statements in favor, and I will open statements in opposition. I'm sorry, Eugene, I see your face. Were you trying to speak also? Okay, good. Sorry, I'm now entertaining statements in opposition. Are there any statements in opposition? Again, I am looking for statements in opposition. Seeing no statements in opposition, I'm going to move to statements in general. Are there any statements in general? I am entertaining statements in general. Are there any statements in general? Seeing no statements in general, I'm going to close the public hearing. This public hearing is now closed. We are now open for council discussion and motion. Counsel, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move, we direct the city administrator to execute the sales agreement of lot thirty four at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park.
Thank you, Counselor Spleedoff. Do I hear a second?
Counselor Coker, I'll second.
Okay, I saw three, three yellow squares pop up. Counselor Coker has seconded this motion. Is there any further discussion from the council?
Yes, I would like say something.
Go ahead, please.
We can't require them to hire anybody in town, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the cost, we are going to pay half of the utilities going to the building.
That was a dirty trick.
Right, the ninety, it's estimated ninety five thousand to get sewer to the building, and they've agreed to split that cost with the city.
So, does that come out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
It will be next year's, well, this year's budget, actually, since we're in the new year, and it will be out of the OIP fund.
We are the IP. Okay, so it won't cost us. Thank you.
Counselor Kenyon, go ahead, please.
Question asked and answered.
Okay. Counselor Hollitt, you have a question?
I just had a statement. I wanted to say thank you for the cath, carts for speaking up. It's very nice to see citizens show up in a meeting and support a property sale like this, and I also am excited for the opportunity for this business to come to Oak Ridge.
I agree. I too am excited about it. Counselor Bjornson?
Yep, I just have to say how excited I am to see this as well. I can't wait to see what he does and what comes out of the OIP once he gets this property.
Great, that's great. Okay. Jackie, will you read for the vote, please?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Did we hit everybody, Jackie?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That passes. Counsel, at this time, it is nine oh, yeah, nine oh nine, and with counsel's permission, I would think that we should probably adjourn and pick this up again. Counselor Kenyon, Counselor Coker, and then Counselor Hollitt.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I wanted to point out, I, I think we may have skipped the discussion, brief discussion we needed to do on the city administrator review. All I think we really need to do is get that document, you know, that out to everyone, and then, and then, you know, just attach some dates to it or something when you send the email. If we could just get that going.
I am happy to do that. I will tell you, it is not going to happen, though, until after the, hold on, I'm popping this up, until after probably the seventeenth, and then I will get it out to everybody.
Do you want me to send it out?
Um, I can pull, I can, let me go in and see if I can find the, I have the folder with all the documents. Let me pull it up and, and see what needs to be done to it, and I can share it with you, and then we'll give, I'll give you a call, and we can get it figured out if, if you're willing.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Counselor Coker, go ahead, then Counselor Hollitt. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kenyon, were you done?
No, I just also mentioned, I think we should just do a quick check and see if there's any citizens that have public comment they were holding for now.
I will before we adjourn. Absolutely. Thank you for the reminder. Counselor Coker, go ahead.
So, I just have a question, since we're not visiting the supplemental tonight, and that's going to be carried over to the next meeting. Is everyone going to continue working as normal, or what's happening with that?
Right.
Um, you know, obviously, we're going to start to reduce expenditures. There'll be no furloughs, if that's your question. There might be some reduction in office hours at city hall.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you, Counselor Coker. Okay, so before we adjourn, we'd still have some members of the public here recognizing that we're adjourning because we've gone over our time limit. I will entertain comments from the public. Please be, be brief, but you do have three minutes. If anyone would like to say something, either raise their hand if they know how to do that, or unmute yourself and, and state your name so I can recognize you. Oh, Paul Forcome, couns, I almost called you Counselor Forcome. Paul Forcome Square, please, go ahead.
I just got a comment as a citizen is with these fireworks, right? Myself, I already bought almost like two hundred dollars worth of them. And this should have been discussed way before now, you know, and now what am I going to do with those? The city going to reimburse me the money for those?
They keep to New Year's Eve. Okay, any other comments? I don't see any. Okay, seeing no other public comments, and it being nine thirteen, I am now adjourning this Oak Ridge City Council. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.